Committee meetings. And tonight, we are entertaining, I'm Brian Lopier, I'm Chair of the Budget Committee. And tonight, we are going to be entertaining a presentation and a discussion with representatives from the PFM Group Consulting regarding city finances. I'm going to have Clerk Rowe call the roll.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Counsel Cahill, absent. Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Sear.
Present.
Present Counsel Lopier.
Present.
Present Counsel Ozy.
Present.
Present Counsel Net.
Present.
Present Counsel Trahan.
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh.
Present.
All right, so I know we have a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to put the screen back up in order to have the viewing public see as well at home. So, and we will entertain questions after the presentation if any councils have questions.
Can you put the screen up?
Thank you, everybody, for your time and your attention this evening. I'll back this up a little bit, move out of the way. Can everybody, okay. So, as the Chairman said, we're with a group called Public Financial Management, the PFM Group. We're based headquartered out of Philadelphia with regional offices in Boston and in Providence and in New England. We've been doing this type of multi-year planning and financial work in small, medium, and large-sized cities across the country for about 30 years. We specialize in this type of analysis, in digging into municipal finances, and digging into operational analyses and projections over a long-term period. And so, we were engaged with the City of Lynn through the city's participation with the community compact work that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is funding. And through that, we were engaged to do three primary things. First, to do a multi-year forecast on the city's budget position. So, what does your out-year budget position look like? If you do absolutely nothing different, just on a carry-forward basis. Obviously, we know in reality that city councils and mayors take actions that will obviously change their budget. But if you did nothing different from this day forward, what does that look like? That's your trajectory. Any policy actions you take in the interim affect that trajectory, some up, some down, some even. So, that was thing one. And that's probably what we'll spend most of our time on tonight, to make sure that everybody has a robust understanding of what our work entailed there. And thing two, we were engaged to look at, was the organization of the city's financial operations. So, we'll talk a little bit about that. Last thing we talked about was the city's capital budgeting and the processes that the city is using versus what the ideal state or ideal best practices are that a city would look to use and think about how it structures and approaches its capital budgeting. So, how do you invest in those type of long-term infrastructure and assets? So, that's what we're going to spend a lot of our time on tonight. We're probably, as I mentioned, going to spend most of our time on the budgeting piece. This is a briefing of where we are in our work. There will be a final memorandum that will be submitted to the city. This is a, I think of it as an executive summary of that memorandum, meant to brief all of you, members of council, on the work we did, but then also to hear from you and entertain questions that you have or any comments that you have. So, we encourage discourse back and forth as you're comfortable, and certainly if folks have questions, we're able to address those. And we'll leave a certain amount of time at the end to make sure that we get through a significant amount of them, so that folks feel like, you know, you kind of understand and have a comfort level of what we've done and where we are in the process. Does that work? Okay. All right, well, with that, I'm going to introduce my two colleagues. I'm Seth Williams, a Senior Managing Consultant out of our Philadelphia office. With me is Vianh Lung, who is going to be doing most of the presentation this evening, and then as well Julia Belsky. And so, we again thank you for your time and look forward to the dialogue that we've had and the opportunity to serve Lynn and the citizens. Thank you very much.
So, as Seth has mentioned, the primary of our work is surrounding three areas. The first is a multi-year budget forecast. That's the top of the triangle you see here. To the right is effective financial management. By that, we mean we look at your finance department, review the operations, and decide what recommendations we want to give to make it more efficient and effective. And then, to the left of that is capital planning. As we understand it, the city has under-invested in its capital assets for years, and we want to take a broader view of that and provide recommendations on how to improve the capital planning process and what are the actionable items the city can immediately pursue. By the nature of our work, again, the primary focus will be at the top of this triangle, the multi-year budget forecast, because it is the most urgent and most immediate challenge that the city is seeing currently. Just to give a little background on why we do multi-year projections and what it really is. In the graphic to the left, the city is doing that on a monthly basis. The city is looking at its cash flow on a monthly basis, seeing where revenues and expenditures are, and the city is tracking a pretty good job of doing that. In the middle of that, you move from the monthly basis to the annual basis, where you do your annual budget, as I'm sure you are all very familiar with. The city does the expenditure part very comprehensively, looking at the schools' budget, looking at the city portion of the budget, not so much on the revenue side, primarily because most of your revenues are property taxes and state aid. What we're doing is moving beyond the monthly and the annual basis and move toward a multi-year perspective. Where do we see the city in five years if nothing changes and prior to any corrective action? We understand that by way of this kind of projection, it's going to be a static projection, and what the numbers that you will see on the screen tonight, these are not meant to be a static number that it will not change. We envision the city to change these numbers as it pursues corrective actions. This is just a perspective on what will happen to the city if nothing changes. So, that's what we're going to be focusing primarily. Why do you want to see your financial projection over a multi-year perspective? The number-one reason is to see your structural position. And by that, we mean looking at recurring revenues and your recurring expenditures. Why is that important? Because you don't want to balance your budget by one-time asset sale. You don't want to balance your budget by doing one-time savings through debt refunding. And by looking at the recurring, we're looking at what do we see the city by looking at this recurring revenues and recurring expenditures and looking at this structural position. The secondary reason we want to do this is to look at the what-if scenarios. What if your tax base grows faster than it is currently growing? What if your tax base doesn't grow as fast? What if you've received less state aid? These what-ifs questions is what the city needs to answer in order to balance its budget on an annual basis. And then, finally, a multi-year projection allows you to see, is that where we want to spend our money? Is that where we want to see it to be in five years? What are our community goals? What are our policy goals? So, this is our mission for the multi-year budget forecast, to identify these three key areas and see where the city ends up at. Right now, we're sharing, as Seth has suggested, our executive summary of our engagement. Through the multi-year budget forecast, we have built a budget model. So, it is more than just a report. It is a dynamic model that we're passing on to the city at the end of this engagement, and we're going to do a training for the city staff, so that the city can use it on an ongoing basis and update it on an annual basis. As an example, you are currently in your fiscal '17. You end your fiscal year on June 30th. When that time comes, you can update your model to reflect the '17 actuals, to see how that changes your trajectory going forward. Again, this is going to be a living document, not a static document. So, before we sort of look forward, we want to look historically. Where have you been? As I have defined what our baseline projection means, it really means, we like to use the doctor's analogy, where it's like going to the doctor, you're doing your physical, and it gives you sort of your baseline projection of where you are, given your current condition, and what happens if nothing changes. So, we wouldn't increase anything beyond the 2.5% tax levy increase. We wouldn't assume any sort of layoffs. We wouldn't assume any sort of wage increases beyond what your current labor contracts We are numbers people, and we realize that, but we also know that behind the numbers is your citizens and your residents. When we look at Lynn's demographics, we don't really see a city that has not recovered its population. The city has, in fact, had a growing population. That means that your tax base is sustainable. That means that you have a sufficient tax base. When we look at how the city has been doing in the other demographic measures, looking at the median household income, looking at the mean earnings, they have been growing according to inflationary rates, and that's a good sign. When you look at the home value, the 2.1% average drop is sort of misleading. When you look at the numbers, 2015, actually was the first year that it started growing up, and we're hoping this is the first sign that the city's home value has been, is growing and recovering from the recession. The unemployment rate has been dropping from the recession. The poverty rate has been growing a little bit, and as you probably know already, it's a little above the national trends. To us, this slide just showing that Lynn is not a city without challenges. It has some challenges. It has a high poverty rate, but it is also a city with a good tax base. It has recovered its population loss. And what you have to do right now is to look at the finances over a multi-year perspective, see what you can generate from your tax base. And this is not a city without hope. We think that this is a strong city with a lot of strong, good economic development opportunities as well. Looking at your historical numbers, the graph here shows fiscal 2010 to 2015 revenues and expenditures. 2013 was the first year when the city had a general fund deficit. And as you can see, it was recurring, and by 2015, your unassigned fund balance, which means the fund balance of reserves that you have that is not restricted, that has gone down to 3% of expenditures. The national best practice for fund balance is about 17%, which is equivalent to two a month. And Lynn, by the end of 2015, had 3%. If you remember from the last slide, the first year of the deficit was 2013. When we look at the net school spending, however, the story creeps a little earlier. Starting in 2011, the city has fallen short of the school spending requirement, and that started in 2011. If you look into the early 2000s, actually, the city had been funding the school more than they required. So, this is a very recent trend that happened in the last five to 10 years. What was driving your historical deficit? This is a telling story here. To the left, the light-shaded bars, those are your revenues. You can see that your state aid, your property tax, have grown at a pretty healthy rate. Your total revenues grew at 4.5% on an annual average basis from 2014 to 16. If you look to the right of the slide, which is the blue bars here, what happened is that your funding goes toward your school spending, your health care, your pension, and in response to those growing spending, you have to cut your city's expenses, and that explains the negative bars there, reducing your operating expense, reducing your cash compensation to city employees. Moving forward, from the historical perspective to the going-forward perspective, we see those trends continue. And let me spend some time on this slide, just to explain it. In the chart at the top, the blue bars here represent your projected annual deficit. That is not cumulative. That means your annual spend, how much your expenditures is going to exceed your revenues on an annual basis. The blue, the yellow bars there represent the fund balance. So, if you remember, at the end of 2015, you had 3% of your general fund expenditure as your fund balance. We project that by the time 2018 comes, prior to any corrective action, the city might deplete its reserves as soon as 2018. Now, that said, we understand that the city has already pursued some actions. These are based on data from February of this year. The city has since then cut additional operation spending, continued to not fill vacancies, and I understand that that $8.6 million deficit projected in 2017 is going to drop a little bit, and the numbers still yet to know until the end of the fiscal year. But the story of this slide is basically that, starting in 2018, you might deplete your reserves. You can see that $7.7 million deficit is going to shrink to $3 million by 2022. Why is that? The projections assume that you would have your annual maximum levy growth of 2.5%, that your residential growth will continue at 1.5%. That means that your property tax is projected to grow at 4%. At the same time, we also assume that there will be no wage increases beyond the current labor contracts. We understand that some of that might not be realistic, but we don't want to assume a wage increase just because. So, as you can see, that kind of deficit shrinks in out-years, but if your property tax grows at a lower rate, if the contracts ended up being more than a 0% wage increase, that deficit will likely increase over the next five years. The one additional layer that has not addressed in this projection is the change in economic conditions. Again, the baseline projection assumes that current conditions does not change. We're currently in our longest expansion period in a business cycle, and therefore, if a recession hits within the next five years, your revenues are likely going to slow down, and that will increase your deficit even more. This is a very similar slide to the one that we looked at from a historical perspective. If you remember that primarily, the historical deficit was driven by school spending, health care, and pension. Same story here. We projected, again, a healthy growth on the revenue side, but then your expenditure is driven by your health care, pension, and school again, leading to expenditures growing at a higher rate than revenues, 3.2% being higher than the 2.9%. That is what is driving your growing deficit in the previous slide. Summarizing our findings here, if we look at the historical trends, you had annual recurring deficits since 2013, annual net school spending deficits since 2011. Your fund balance has reduced to 3% of your general fund spending. You got a credit downgrade in 2016. Moving forward, it is not surprising that if, prior to corrective action, those things will continue. So, we did project an structural annual deficits, starting in 2017, which is this year, that your fund balance might be depleted as soon as FY '18, and that the city really needs immediate corrective actions in order to fix this. We weren't intending to stop there and just say, "See you later." The annual deficits are real. They are daunting. We propose, these options that is on the screen here, these are not prescriptive. These are just options that we have explored and thought about and wanted to show you how it's going to close the fiscal gap. From the revenue perspective, the baseline projection already included the annual tax levy increase of 2.5%. We recommend that you revise your fee schedules on a yearly basis, so that you can recover all your costs. You might want to explore new local option taxes, like the meals tax, as we understand the city is currently considering it. On the expenditure side, with personnel expenses being the largest slice of your pie chart there, the control of the personnel expenses is really important, especially with the labor negotiations involved. The other thing that we have noticed is the health care claims. A lot of the personnel expenses is driven by the health care and pension costs. The city is currently self-insured, and we realize it is very difficult to project the health claims, because it's unpredictable. And so, this is one of the options that the city can pursue, is to share the cost of growth with employees and exploring a premium-based provider. All of these are, again, not prescriptive. These are meant to be options that the city can pursue to figure out how to close the fiscal gap. This is a scenario that we have looked at, just to illustrate, again, simply to illustrate the magnitude and the number of options the city needs to pursue in order to close the fiscal gap. We understand some of these the cities are already pursuing. The first one, moving the custodian costs of school budget, the city is already pursuing it. The city is already not filling positions and in the process of eliminating some of the vacant positions. At the bottom there, the city is already reducing non-personal expense. But we also realize that the story is not just cutting your way through. There is going to be a time when there's no way to cut even more, and we want to be able to provide a perspective prior to that point, so that the city can pursue corrective action prior to that. We just want to stress here that the severity of the issue is big. With the city depleting its fund balance as soon as FY '18, the city needs to pursue options right now in order to fix the problem. With Massachusetts, you have the free cash restriction. Therefore, that issue becomes even more urgent, immediate. Again, the three parts of our project, the biggest part is a multi-year budget forecast, but we also had two sort of small engagements. One was on the capital planning, the other's on the financial operations review. We spent a lot of time on the multi-year budget forecast, but I want to spend a little time touching on the second and the third phase of the project. The second phase is the financial operations review. When we look at your finance department, this is the current organizational structure. The shaded boxes here, these are the functions that are currently held by one person. The city needs to start placing internal budgetary control in its budget, and it's impossible, based on what the city charter requires the CFO to do, to have all these three functions placed on one person's shoulder. So, one of our most immediate recommendations is that the cities separate out the functions of the assessor and the CFO, such that the CFO has the capacity to start placing some internal budgetary control. That means, before the budget year, you start really projecting your revenues in a meaningful way. That means doing quarterly financial reporting, so that you understand through each quarter where the city is going to end up at the end of the fiscal year. That includes establishing a fund balance policy, so that you do not deplete your fund balance in the near future. Those policies, those internal budgetary control, takes a lot of time, and we believe that the first and foremost recommendation we have for the city is to separate out those two functions between the assessor and the CFO, such that the CFO has time to even do those tasks. The second longer-term recommendation we have is to have a COO position that serves between the mayor and the CFO. Again, as you saw from the previous slides, the city has a list of options that needs to pursue in order to close the fiscal gap. Those options do not happen overnight. They take a long time to vet out. It involves a lot of conversations with external stakeholders, and we believe that it would be helpful for the city if you establish a COO position in order to do some kind of long-term trajectory planning, whereas the CFO is more focused on the day-to-day financial reporting and monitoring. On the third phase of our project, the capital planning phase of project, again, we understand that the city is currently under-investing in its capital. And it's somehow contradictory, because you have a general fund deficit, and yet, at the same time, we're saying you're under-investing your capital. What we pursue is that the city needs to first and foremost establish some capital policies. First and foremost, establish a framework before the capital investment comes, so that the framework is already in place, and then you can strategically invest in your capital infrastructure and assets. So, we basically provide a couple of recommendations on the capital policies the city should pursue, one of which is how to define your capital projects. Capital projects are not your equipment, not your one-time vehicles. Capital projects are your investment in your buildings, in your sidewalks, in your police and fire station. Those are your capital projects that the city needs to invest in. The other key policy that we recommend is a sort of a debt policy, because a lot of capital projects require some kind of debt funding. We want the city to establish a debt policy, so that you understand the impact of the debt, and so that the debt burden doesn't get too high, without some kind of oversight or monitoring. This gets to my previous point on what it means to have a debt policy. Capital projects are usually funded in two ways. One is a pay-as-you-go, which the city is currently primarily doing. Pay-as-you-go funding is money that comes off the operating budget. The city also, on the school project basis, do some of the debt-funded capital projects. By thinking through what it means to do capital projects, either pay-as-you-go or debt-funded, the city can really start thinking of the framework of how do we decide what type of projects do we pursue? How do we decide how to fund it? Who owns those capital projects? What is the reporting requirement? We have done a fuller, again, more comprehensive, more comprehensive summary on what it means to have a capital plan improvement in place, but this is just summary of what it means to, what the items to think about as you pursue your capital improvement plan. A capital plan is a sort of a year-long process, from defining something, your projects, to ranking and prioritizing it, to really adopting as a budget, and then do your year-long reporting and monitoring. This is a year-long project, and this ties to our second phase of our project, meaning that we recommend you to have a CFO in place, right? This capital process requires a lot of time, a lot of vetting, a lot of tasks, a lot of discussions. And by having that separate out, full-time CFO employee in place, you can really start thinking about these issues, so that you can start having that framework and structure in place for your capital planning. I know that I've talked a lot, again, the most primary engagement that we are doing is a multi-year budget forecast, because that is the most urgent, that is the most immediate, and the deficits are daunting. The second and the third phases of projects are more minor. We know that those are not immediate tasks that the city needs to pursue tomorrow, but those are things that the city really needs to think about, as you think about long-term planning. What we have seen in the historical trends and the structural deficit and the sort of projections out-years is a lack of long-term planning over the last five years, and that's why we recommended all these recommendations, so that the city can think, start thinking about what it means to think not just next year, not just through this election cycle, but to think about the next five to 10 years and how you want to invest in the citizens and residents. That's all I got for the presentation. This was meant to be an executive summary of our work, the three phases of our work. Please feel free to ask any questions or clarifying questions that you have.
Thank you for that thorough presentation. One thing that jumped out at me, and I remember back in college, garbage in, garbage out. If you have wrong data, you're going to spit out the wrong data. And I'm not casting any aspersions on your projections or your data. It's very helpful, it's important, that the city see this, because we haven't been following it. But some questions I have, like property, property value, you have up on your data that property values have gone down in the last five years, and I'm just really mystified by that. Where do you, is that a national projection? Is it local?
The demographic data on that slide, we're all from, sorry, we're all from the U.S. Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. So, it is like an average value.
It doesn't apply, though, to here.
But for Lynn.
Yeah. It wouldn't apply to Lynn.
No, no, no. It's data for Lynn. The source is the U.S. Census Bureau, but it's data specific to Lynn, so it's representative of the community here.
Well, I would give a little criticism here, in that you really need to accurately reflect what you have here in Lynn. Property values have not gone down in five years. In fact, they've gone up quite a bit in the last five years.
And what you'll see in that is that's the average. So, you're absolutely right. There's, you know, with any average, there are those at the top, there are those at the bottom, and that's the average of what the community has done, and that's over, that's through 2015.
I disagree with that average totally. It's not even close.
Would Mr. Karen like to come up and address, we have CFO Karen here that might be able to clarify the values in the Ebb and Flow.
As far as single-family values, they have been going up. We hit the bottom in, this is based on the assessments, in 2010 or so, we hit the bottom. It stays stagnant for several years. The last four years or so, they've been increasing. We dropped down into the 220s on an average single-family value, somewhere around 2012. And FY '17, the average single-family value was up to 220. And FY17, the average single-family value was up to 276. However, I would point out that regardless of that fact, it changes nothing in the financial situation because of Prop 2 and 1/2 restrictions. Whether the values are going up or going down, it doesn't change the revenue projections for the city at all. So it's really, it's whether the data is right or wrong or inaccurate or misleading doesn't really change the revenue source at all in terms of how much revenue we can project.
Counsel Lozey.
But again, if it's 2 and 1/2 of, let's throw out a number, values of...
It's not 2 and 1/2. That's the problem. It's Prop 2 and 1/2 is that you can increase your tax levy by 2 and 1/2 percent each year.
Right, I understand.
If the values go up 10%, go up 20%, or they go down like they did in 2009, 2010, it doesn't change the amount of taxes we can collect.
Mr. Karen, does it not stand to reason a house valued at $500,000 will collect more in taxes than a house worth, say, $300,000?
Not necessarily, no.
No? So a house, a half a million dollar house, not pay more taxes than a $300,000 house?
If you have a $500,000 house and all the other houses are assessed at $400,000, that house will pay more than everybody else. If you have a $500,000 house and the other house is assessed at $700,000, then that house will pay a lot less. It's depending, the Prop 2 and 1/2, it's not important what the value of the property is. It's important what the value is in comparison to all the other properties. That determines whether its taxes are going to go up or go down. If my value goes up by 5% and everyone else goes up by 10%, my tax bill will go down. The opposite is same true, the same thing is true, you know? And if the values drop, if my value drops by 10% and everyone else's value drops by, excuse me, if my value drops 5% and everybody else's value goes down by 10%, nobody's taxes go down, and my taxes go up more than the average person.
I just would like to have the data more accurately reflect the conditions in Linn. So Seth and Julia, if you could, when you, you know, this is the executive report we're getting, but when you bring it to a frutation, a finish, if you would include more accurate data, I think I'd feel a little bit better on that.
My recommendation would be to use the average single-family values that are issued by the Department of Revenue each year.
Sure.
In the state of Mass.
Department of Revenue, yes. State of Massachusetts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lozey. Any other questions from the council? Counsel Capano?
Curious. In your data, first of all, can we get a copy of the...
I'm sorry?
Hot copies of that?
Sure. I don't believe we have any tonight because we haven't finalized everything, but we'll absolutely send it along and make sure that it gets to the hands and it gets to you ultimately, absolutely.
Thank you.
And we have a detail.
Yeah, and certainly you'll get a full copy of the 18- or 20-page memorandum that will be produced as well.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. One of them is, you had the median income of residents in Linn. What effect does that have on the city budget?
Given your revenue sources, not marginal, I mean, not terribly significant, your revenue sources are predominantly from the state. Now, if you suddenly become a much more affluent community or a much poorer community in terms of median income, that may affect services that the city has to provide, either up or down, and expectations, and that has an important impact on the city's budget from a service delivery standpoint, which is an expenditure-driven standpoint. But to your point, it's, if you go through a development boom, and that brings a lot of people into the city, you'll have a service demand increase, but you'll also have likely a building permit revenue increase. How that happens in each community is very different, but the interplay and relation between kind of revenue impacts of population and expenditure impacts of service delivery is an important relation to keep in mind as you see those kind of demographic and socioeconomic changes in a community.
When you do, when you use the median income, that's different than the average income?
Correct.
So you could have a couple of people that made $10 million in income a year, and that would drag the whole thing up. If you used average income, the chance could be much lower.
Yeah, you could, you could see differences between a median and an average, absolutely.
The other question I had was, I didn't see it in there, but I might have missed it. And I don't know if you've thought about it or if it was part of the discussion, but the potential for some of the projects that we're hoping would be developed over the next few years, you know, if we were to, you know, if we had a 350-unit property developed and then another 1,200 units and 350 across the street, and it's all kinds of proposals for 30, 40-unit buildings, you know, in the city, how that would affect our revenue? You know, it's hard, like, I have a hard time trying to see how much money that actually is, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Is that going to help us? Is that, it's definitely help us.
Sure.
Is that going to solve the problem? I mean, how, you know, how extensive the problem is?
Again, it depends, it depends the scale, and it depends on any, if there are any tax agreement structures that would be in place to support those developments. So the answer is likely it would help your budget. How much, it depends on the development, the location, the tax structure of any agreements that are associated. Those are not built into the projections. What this is meant to do is, absent anything, so absent new hiring, it's meant to take, I'm using example, if you have a workforce of 500 today in city government, it projects a workforce of 500 across the entire, you don't hire anybody, you don't lose anybody. The same thing with building. It anticipates that 1.5% of new development growth that you've had, nothing above that. So if something were to alter that 1.5% and make it 2.5%, that's not included in the baseline, and that would be additive to the city's revenues.
And is there a way, I expect you to know this, but is there a way we can find out? Or, you know, I'd like to know, like, hypothetically, if there was a 350-unit development, or say, 1,000-unit development, and they had a TIF, tax incremental financing, over a year, is there a way, over a number of years, is there a way to determine whether, you know, the benefit of, you know, the taxes we would receive in relation to the services we would have to provide because of the TIF? You know, there's got to be a balance somewhere, you know?
Absolutely.
At some point, I don't know if it's worth it. I'm sure it's, you know...
No, it's a very good question to ask. The short answer to the question is yes. There is a way to work through that and figure it out. I mean, the shortest answer I can give, and it probably isn't the most thorough answer, but the shortest answer is the model that we're going to turn over to the city, this kind of budget forecasting model, contains, you can control for changes in the assessed value. So if such a property, if you were, I'm making this up, right? If you say, this is going to increase our assessed property value by $100 million. And here's the impact, it's $100 million net of any TIF or anything like that, it's $100 million this year, 110 the following, whatever the structure is, that could be figured in here, and you would see the revenue output of that. So that's the short answer to the question. To your operational side of the question, yes, you would need to do some thorough thinking with department heads and city leaders to figure out what those operational costs are, but those can then be quantified in terms of what the hard physical cost, whether it be capital assets, whether it be investment of new roads, utilities, and things like that that the city may fund, or whether it means new employees, new services that the city has never provided or needs to provide more of. All of those would come into the equation, and you could net those out to figure out what the net impact is of any type of agreement.
Just one more question.
Yep, Counsel Capano.
So would the right way to be thinking about this is, I know you have a number of suggestions, you know, going forward. I don't remember all of them, and I don't remember the deficits that are projected in the years going forward.
Sure.
But would the way to think about it, would that, the way to think about that be to take those projected deficits and use that as a baseline for the amount of revenue we would need in order to maintain the services we have right now?
Yes, with some caveats, and I know that's a little bit of a challenge.
Was this a big...
Conceptually, conceptually, yes.
Really think about this in a nuts-and-bolts type of way?
Yeah. Conceptually, that's the right answer. There are some caveats on it that I'd be happy to talk through, but conceptually, yes, you're right. And if you are not able to generate that revenue, that's the amount of expenditure reductions you'd need to seek.
Thank you.
Counsel Chahin?
Thank you. I'd just like to follow, I'd just like to follow up on Counselor Capano's thing through the chair to Mr. Karen. Do you, you guys must have talked about this. Do you have a rough estimate of the millions of dollars those 2,000 units would bring into the city once they're built? You must have a rough idea of those properties.
It's dependent upon what kind of, if there's any, as we talk about, any kind of TIF agreements with them.
Yeah, I'm saying, just minus the TIFs right now, what, like...
Well, we have, I mean, the problem is until I have from the developer his projections of what his revenues and his expenses are going to be once the project is operational, because the value of the property will be based on those income and expenses.
Money that he brings in.
Yes, so I've done, I've asked, for example, I've asked, in discussions with the Beacon Chevrolet site, I've asked for that information. I haven't received it yet because I've been asked that specific question. But until I have that information, keeping in mind that apartment complexes typically, that's the basis for their value, is the net income they're generating to the property owner. That's what the person buying a property or developing a property like that is, how he's placing a value on it, is how much money can it generate for him.
So how do you set his first years, how do you set their taxes?
Well, I, you know, they're usually going to give me projections. They're going to tell me this is what they expect in terms of rent, this is what they expect in terms of expenses. I know that when we worked on the Gateway project, we spent an enormous amount of time with neighborhood development going over those projections in order to determine what kind of tax agreement we wanted to enter into them in terms of making sure that the tax relief was sufficient to get the project built, but it was sufficient also to maximize the amount of income the city would realize during the length of the agreement. But that, all that, also, all those discussions were based on the projections of income and expenses that were planned for that project, and that's the analysis they have to go in. I mean, I hear numbers like, oh, they're going to spend $80 million on this project. I can give you an estimate as to how much tax dollars that will generate if it's an $80 million project, but that's not necessarily how it's going to be assessed. I mean, you know, to talk about a single-family home, some people will spend $50,000 on a new kitchen. It's not going to necessarily add $50,000 to their value, you know? So it's not just how much they're spending to build it. So I need more detailed information in terms of what they're planning, to the rent levels they're planning, and the, what their operating expenses they foresee. Once I have that information, then I can make a more specific determination as to how much revenue it's likely to generate.
So in your opinion, are these TIFs that we're given, are they hurting us? Are they, I mean, like, what's your balance? How do you weigh that out?
Well, I think, I think...
Get people to develop and...
I think if we're talking the difference between a residential TIF and a commercial TIF, commercial TIF, you know, pretty much the concept of a TIF is that if you don't give the TIF, that property is just going to be the way it always was in generating a limited amount of revenue. So at some point, you know, those type of TIFs. Now, in terms of residential TIFs, you know, there's certain policy decisions that are made. For example, you granted a TIF for the old bank building downtown in Central Square. Now, I think in that situation, it might have been less, there might have been less interest in how much revenue is being generated as opposed to the importance of bringing in new residents downtown, which will help spur the development downtown. So...
Right, you're right, as it's all...
Yeah, exactly. Now, how much benefit that some of these other projects planned on the winway, do you want to give that generous of an agreement, or do you want to give more? You know, I mean, those are policy decisions that, you know, weigh over and above or in addition to just the amount of revenue that it's going to generate.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just, if I can continue with the...
Counsel Chahin.
Now, hearing that, how do you guys feel about those TIFs? Like, we're talking about probably, you know, pretty much, as you said, 2,000 units come to the city. What would you guys do? Would you give the TIFs? I mean, like...
Without seeing the specific data and being able to do a much deeper analysis, I'm not really in a good position to give you advice on that at this moment.
Okay.
I would say TIFs in governments, TIFs are a tool in the toolkit. Sometimes they're the right tool, sometimes they're the wrong tool, and almost on a case...
Like, commercial, I think they're good, I agree. I mean, they've done a lot for us, for our city. But like, for the residential, do you feel as though...
Again...
Recommend, like, when you guys do these analyses and get back...
I would, to be in a position to give you really prudent advice, I'd need to do a much deeper analysis on it to look at kind of what's being proposed and what the net benefit, what the, to Councilwoman's question, what potential new costs might be added as well, what capital investments would need, all of that would need to be taken into account, and I'm not in a position to be able to answer that question until I do that.
Maybe, let me ask you it a different way. Now, if, you must do a lot of this for cities and towns, do you see cities and towns doing this? Do you guys give in the TIFs for the residential?
Yeah, they're called different things in different communities.
Yeah, but it's all similar, so do you find them that they're doing them?
All tax incentive-based, and in some instances, they're the right tool to apply, in some instances...
I understand, depends on the city and the town.
Sure.
And what they are.
Yeah.
So you don't see one way or the other? That it's positive?
I think it's a specific, it's, I tend to treat each use of any kind of tax incentive as, on a case-by-case basis, is it the right tool for this particular goal that we have at this time with each specific project? Because if you say it just applies to residential, I think in some cases, it may not be the right tool for residential, and in some cases, it might be the right tool for residential. I really think it depends on the proposal, the project, and the potential scope of new revenues versus new expenditures that it would, it would have an impact on the city for.
Okay. Then I got one more tough question for you guys. What would you do, you know, the city's a business, let's face it, it should be run like a business. What three things, top three things, just quick off your heads, would you do right now to straighten this city out? If it's late, I mean, just like, put it on the line, what would you guys recommend?
I think the city has to take a very hard look at the expenditure side of its equation, and that's not an easy conversation, given some of the cuts that it's had to make in recent years. Those are always some of the most unpleasant conversations that a city has to have, any government unit, whatever the level. I think your healthcare expenses...
Should we have to shut off our healthcare?
I think your healthcare expenditures, I think you should have a savings goal there. I think that's one ready opportunity that you could achieve without hopefully impacting in a significant way the ability to provide affordable and meaningful coverage to the employees that it's meant to protect and provide, who deliver important services to residents and businesses here. I really do think that the city needs to look at a full-time CFO. I think a lot of the city's opportunities to deal with its long-term financial situation reside in having somebody who has the time and space and resources to think about those and deal with it on an ongoing, everyday basis. And without that, it's really going to be a challenge for the city to be able to do so.
It is, but...
And that leads to kind of a third thing, which would be to really look hard, and I know it may, we're not lawyers and don't pretend to be one, but it may result in a charter change if you were to adopt a COO model. And part of the reason for thinking about a COO model is it gives time and space to that full-time CFO, that they're not the referee in the operation discussions, that instead you have somebody who runs the day-to-day...
Operations.
Operations of the city and is the mediator of disputes and ultimately has to make a decision on how the city is run and why, certainly reporting to and through the mayor, but on a day-to-day basis, those general operations. We're increasingly seeing cities turn to a COO model because it allows that point person, somebody who's ultimately responsible, and that's proven useful in a lot of jurisdictions. And I think in Linn would be hopefully a useful tandem with a full-time... would be hopefully a useful tandem with a full-time CFO.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Capano?
Yeah, so just to continue with that, whether we have, whether we do anything with that, it's something we have to discuss, but, you know, I think the CFO had, with all the different hats that he has, did ring the alarm bells, you know? I mean, you know, we knew it was a problem a few months ago. So even if we had a CFO, and that was his sole duty, I think we still would have had the same results.
Shut off all money.
So what would have, what would have changed? I mean, what would have been different?
Retrospectively, I'm not in a great position to answer that question, because I don't know the local specific history here. On a prospective basis, I think now, you know, kind of the first rule when you find yourself in a hole is stop digging. I think that's kind of where Lynn is at right now financially, is you're staring up at a pretty significant hole over a period, a short period of time. The reason the out years looked better in terms of the smaller deficits as you went further out was because most of your municipal union contracts expire in FY19, and as Vian noted, you don't assume any wage increases beyond there. Is that realistic? That's a policy choice for the elected leadership in Lynn to make. What that suggests to me is that having a CFO, having a CFO on a prospective basis to spot some of those long-term decisions, right now you kind of find yourself in a crisis. You need to balance being able to manage the crisis with being able to prevent future crises.
So rather than put out fires, you're more long-term planning.
So you're investing both in short-term crisis management with a full-time CFO, but also long-term crisis management so that you prevent them? And that's the combination of a COO and a CFO, kind of performing their respective duties. And that's how I think prospectively, that's where a CFO sets some of those policies so that the city has a formal way that it deals with its capital, its capital investments, its debt, its budget policies, et cetera, et cetera.
I think what myself and Counselor Chahin are trying to get at, so there, and I think you said that earlier, if we had more specific information on a particular project, you know, it was in its final stages, and this is what we had, and a TIF would be, was being considered, at that point, there could be a determination made as to whether the TIF would offset any, you know, whether the TIF would, how much that would affect the amount of revenue, whether it would be worth it because of the services we may have to provide to that project.
Yeah, with a lot of specific information, you can do a good analysis to see the pros and cons. And I think the assessor made a good point, which isn't necessarily a numbers assessment, which is in certain instances, you may have a policy goal that may not align with, you know, does this balance out to a net positive or a net negative? Your policy goal may be, well, if it's not too negative, we think the policy goal is worth absorbing some cost for. And that's a different analysis than a straight numbers analysis.
TIFs are obvious. Like, I know they, TIF given to a project in Pride's Crossing in Beverly a number of years ago, which I thought was totally ridiculous, you know, didn't need, didn't need that. But some of the ones that we have, you know, have to do with whether, you know, there's going to be future investment in the city, and we need to balance, find that balance there because of the budget problems that we have.
Sure. It's an important and imperative analysis to do in any type of, and that's, I think you're asking the right question.
No, I'm, I think Peter...
Counselor Ozzy?
When can we expect a final report?
I would think certainly within the week, if not a little sooner.
Okay, good, thank you.
So you know other questions? Counselor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of general statements, and then a couple of questions, I guess. With respect to the city's use of the TIFs for the commercial properties, I agree that we've probably come to the end of the road on that. I would argue that the program's been very successful. We probably should not have, looking in retrospectively, extended 20-year TIFs. We should have probably played more in the five- to 10-year range, but unfortunately, in a city like Lynn, we were eager to get some employment there. And that's, one of the benefits, I remember, of the TIFs is you forego the added tax benefit however you add the employment benefit for your community. And the H-TIFs that we've been using have been helpful as well for remediating existing stock that were old, and that requires market rate. So that's great, because we're going to be bringing in more market rate folks into the area. So there are some benefits there, but I would caution going forward that we, if we do look at some of these tax incentives, that we don't extend it so far out. As far as the charter changes concerned, we've recently done some homeroom petitions, and I can tell you that counsel in the legislature was concerned that we haven't updated our, provided an updated charter to the city's archives, to the state's archives. And we had to explain to them that the last time was in fact 1978. They didn't believe that, so we're still discussing that matter. That it's been nearly 40 years since we've had a real charter commission look at it and actually pass a new charter. That's something that needs to probably be done prior to the 40th anniversary of not only the charter, but my own life of 40 years. So on healthcare, though, I'm curious, what are your, did you look at, I'm assuming with healthcare costs on the employee side, that you looked at the current program that we offer. What are your views on going forward? Because I believe we're in the, we are currently in the timeframe to renegotiate healthcare costs with our city union. So what are, what are your suggestions on that? And what can we expect? And I know it's, everything's in flux with healthcare.
Sure.
What we're expecting, but what are your suggestions?
It's an interesting time to talk about healthcare right now, isn't it? Healthcare in any, healthcare provision in any government is always a tricky circumstance, because you're balancing the needs of your employees with the needs to manage cost, and trying to do so in a way that strikes a balance between affordability and sustainability for both sides of the equation. So in terms of specifics and recommendations for Lynn, I think that was not necessarily in the purview of what we were asked to do. So can I say to you, you need to, you know, I'm making this up, I don't know this to be true, but for instance, you should, you should increase your deductibles in the plan that you offer from X to Y. That's a tool in the toolkit of some governments. That's the right tool to bring to bear. If you already have fairly high deductibles, that may not be the right tool. Another one is obviously the split in share of healthcare premium, how much the city's paying versus how much employees contribute to their overall healthcare provision, and how you stratify that is another provision. Another option is thinking about wellness and kind of what's been, in terms of kind of consumerism in healthcare, having employees become more active participants in their own healthcare provision, and staying healthy and being well. Obviously, that has an important impact on their job, but also an important impact on their life outside of their job, an important impact for their family. Understanding who you're covering and the number of covered lives that are on the city's plan is also very important. You know, how many spouses you have, do they have access to other coverage? Is the city providing that coverage for your, those are all things that we were not asked to explore in this engagement, but we have explored with other communities that are certainly worthwhile endeavors for the city to look at. In terms of, I think more specifically, maybe to your question, are there certain things that Lynn needs to achieve? I think what we saw is your healthcare expenditures, that certainly is one area that probably needs to be slowed and addressed in some way. Whether any of the tools I mentioned are the right tools, I think there's probably a number. What that number is, is cumulative based on the policy choices you want to make. But if you're looking at a deficit of $7.7 million, and you look at your numbers and you say, I'm not, we're not willing to cut here, here, and here, then healthcare may be bigger. If you're looking at healthcare and you say, well, we don't want to touch much of that, we think it's about right, and that's as far as we're willing to go, then you're looking in other places. So I think it's a, it's a mix, but healthcare is certainly one of the biggest areas to me that jumped off the page and said, I think there's some areas where you can contain cost, but do so in a way that balances it with not unduly burdening employees in a way that affects their ability to properly cover themselves and their families.
And if, and if you have any data or information about what other communities are doing, more, I'm more interested in new hires with respect to the employee contribution side of the equation. Changing the formula for existing employees is something that, you know...
Sure. I mean, there have been communities that have done all sorts of different things, and it's stratified based on date of hire, based on years of service, some combination of the two, and those are absolutely things that we've seen in other communities, whether it be offering plans that, offering new employees plans that aren't available, that change the structure compared to what current employees have. That certainly has been done in a lot of communities. And again, on that continuum, there are various ways from just having the share between employer and employee change, but same plan provision, to not offering anything but a high deductible plan to new hires. That's, you know, that's a gamut, and there's a range of things in between there that we've seen communities do, all of which are community-specific to their goals that they're trying to achieve.
Thank you. And just one final ask. If you could provide data also, you had said a number of times that the city has not been filling positions. I'm just curious...
I'm sorry, the city has?
The city hasn't been filling employment or employment positions. I heard that a few times.
positions, you mean?
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I don't, I don't, I haven't seen that, so...
So there are positions in the budget that are, in the budget, but have not been eliminated. And so the elimination of those positions...
It's the $1 positions? If you look, there's usually a $1 allotment for it. That keeps the position open, but they're rarely ever, ever, ever filled.
Sure.
Are those the ones we're talking about?
No, it's, we're talking more operational, like fire department, police department...
If we just get a list of the ones that we haven't filled, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we got it from the city. We can absolutely...
Oh, okay, yeah, because I thought there were, I thought we were filling positions, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one quick question.
Counselor Chahin?
Now, when does our health insurance, like with the company, with Harvard, like, when does that come up? Like, how many year term is that, that contract?
Well, it's actually coalition bargaining with the unions is really what occurs. That was up on June 30. The mayor offered to the unions to extend it for one year only. Her position was she wanted to see what was going to come out of Washington, although now it looks like, you know, there's not, there may not be a lot of change coming out of Washington on healthcare, but it still could be. And she just wanted, you know, so I think she wanted to see the, everything settled down, and so she asked to wait for a year before, asked the unions to say, let's maintain the status quo for one year, and then we'll...
That's just your theory, it's yours to do.
So it's going to be June 30 to 2018, we will have to do something. One of the things the unions did request is that we put the provider out to bid, in the sense that they wanted us to solicit proposals from other suppliers, other providers other than Harvard Pilgrim. So, I mean, now we...
That is, I mean, that is one of our biggest expenses, so...
I agree, I agree 100%. One of the things, one of the things I've been recommending to the mayor and to anyone who listens is that one of the biggest problems we have is the self-insurance aspect of how we're set up right now. And what that creates for us, both in terms of the funding, the city budget in general, and also with the net school spending problem, is that when we, right now, in trying to budget for next year for both the schools and the city, I am basically, in terms of funding health insurance, I'm trying to guess how many claims we're going to be getting three to 15 years in the, three to 15 months in the future. And, you know, if we have, if we have a bad run of claims, that can throw the, you know, we can, you know, it's really, we're in a guesstimating rather than actually est, making a regional estimate. If we, if we have a premium-based plan where the insurance company basically sets the rates at this, roughly around this time, I know, if I know how many employees I have, I have a rough idea of how many family plans I'm going to have, how many single plans I'm going to have, I can pretty much pin down the health insurance cost for both the city side, and also it helps me on the net school spending side, because the biggest problem we've had on net school spending in terms of hitting the number is that health insurance number, because that makes up 13% of the school budget. If I'm off by one or $2 million, I'm off by a small percentage on the school side, that can make a couple million dollars I'm off on the net school spending. And the problem is, I don't know I'm off on the net school spending until we're well into the fiscal year in some cases. So that creates a lot of issues for us. So I think a premium-based plan, while it may not necessarily save us money at all, it will help on the budgeting side in terms of getting a grasp of what we, how much money we have to fund for health insurance for the coming year, and how much money we need to put in the school department.
Counselor Batten?
Peter, you can stay there. Peter, how many employees do we have in the city, city workers, that their spouses work in the school department?
There's a few. There's a few out there. Yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't think we can force people, but I mean, I mean, it would be helpful to the city if the spouse were the, and worked at the school department, were the, was the one getting the health insurance. But I don't think we can force people to decide, you know, force them to have one person or the other get the insurance. I mean, that's a decision they have to make.
But can't we at least look at the numbers?
We could do that. I don't know if we identify people by necessarily, we could probably could, because if they're, I mean, they'd be listed as beneficiaries, we'd have, but, you know, I mean, we, it might be something to look at in the fall, but we got other issues to deal with right now in terms of the budget.
Counselor Chahin?
Just, just quick, and just now talking to him, and this has been very enlightening. I think that our, I think our biggest challenge right now, not challenge, but the biggest thing we can all do, putting our heads together, is definitely healthcare, right? We need to shop it, we need to work with the employees and try to get that number down, and increases or whatever we need to do, right? That's going to be our biggest way to change around our deficit right now.
I think, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, was that just healthcare you were talking about?
Yeah, I think that's our biggest thing to go after right now that's going to be coming up. It's a huge part of our budget.
I, you're absolutely right, and I agree, it's a significant component of what you need to address.
I mean, to me, it's the quickest way that we can make a change, in my estimation.
Yeah, I think that's one of the levers that you can pull. I think there are probably three or four, five other levers that are equally as hard and equally as challenging that in order to navigate the deficit.
That's going to be the biggest bang for our buck, I think.
It may be, yeah. It's certainly one of the significant options on the table.
Now, do you, again, I'll ask you this question, do you see other cities and towns going after that healthcare to straighten out their budgets? You do. Okay, so that's, I think all of us should, something we all need to work, work towards, I think, in, you know, the healthcare, I think that's going to be our biggest way to, to kind of close the gap up, so.
There's no other objection? I have, if no one objects, I have a question directed to CFO Karen, since you brought it up. So the 800-pound gorilla in the room is the net school spending. Can you give us the latest update as to how we are doing on making our payment agreement with DESI, and furthermore, are we in jeopardy of losing Chapter 70 monies by not making our payments?
Well, the official notification just came out today of FY16, that we lost $826,000. So that affects our revenue for FY17. They are going to withhold that as a penalty.
Why did we lose that amount?
Because we underspent on net school spending by $800,000 on a $200,000, $200 million budget. Once again, because we underestimated how much health insurance we would, would be attributable to the schools. So, and we don't, we don't know that until after the school year is done in some cases, so it makes it very difficult.
Was that above and beyond the payment plan that we set up to avoid that?
That includes the payment plan.
How much have we paid them?
Well, that was the, last year was the first $2.2 million installment on the payment plan. So after adding what our required spending was for 16 plus $2.2 million, we fell $826,000 short.
So then that's what gets taken off of the other end, and then we don't see it ever again?
That's, it doesn't affect the schools, it affects us in terms of our revenues.
Right. So the Chapter 70, whatever, usually you say it's $11 million a month.
They're going to deduct $826,000 on the June 30 payment.
So usually we get $11 million, and now we're going to be estimated at $10.2 or something like that. So that complicates matters even further. Is that... something like that. So that complicates matters even further. Is that kind of making talks about what we see and hear in each department now to make that cut before the end of this fiscal year, or are those cuts projected for FY18?
Which cuts are we talking about?
I'm talking about the cuts around the departments, like we talked about two weeks ago.
Okay, what's been, what the mayor's requested from departments is that they fund their budgets at the same level as FY17. What that effectively does is that it eliminates the pay raises as a portion, as a portion of the FY18 projected deficit. In other words, that those pay raises account for about roughly 3.35, 3.75 to $4 million in terms of increasing the payroll. Assuming no positions are removed, no positions are reduced, we would have to fund the budgets by an additional $4 million on the payroll side, just to pay those pay raises. What the, basically, the mayor has said is you've got to absorb those pay raises within your budget. So keep in mind that that, keep in mind the FY17 budget was 4.2 or so structurally deficient, meaning that we did make it up with other cuts and some free cash, but we haven't addressed that 4.2 structural deficit from the FY17 with the mayor's request that they, that the departments submit those budgets. So we still got roughly a $4 million to $5 million problem that's going to be addressed through additional budget cuts or through revenue enhancement.
So one of the fallouts from that, as reported in the paper, things are these brownouts at the local fire stations and aren't able to stay open. Is that a result of trying to absorb an FY17 to be able to pay out an FY18?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, so it has nothing to do with FY18. That's FY17 to absorb the FY, those raises in FY17.
The retroactivity.
Yes. No, they may, they, those may have to continue in FY18, because the overtime money may be limited. If the fire department has to meet its budgetary requirement, it's possible the fire chief will reduce the amount of overtime in order to meet that requirement. But that's, that's a policy decision or a, a operational decision the fire chief has to make.
We're not out of the woods come July, July 30, June 30th, perhaps.
We still have not addressed the structural deficit of the FY17 budget. All we've done, all we've done is address the raises.
Which approximately $4 million.
Which approximately $4 million. So, you know, I mean, we may have some additional revenue that hasn't been absorbed by the schools from our new FY18 revenues that may address some of that, but we've also got the snow and ice deficit. We're going to have some sort of deficit on health insurance. Those all have to be addressed in the FY18 budget also.
But as you said earlier, you won't know some of those claims until three months after the fiscal year.
Well, that's the health, the health insurance issue, is we don't know exactly what the health insurance number's going to be, you know, because we're self-insured.
Any other, Counsel Trahan.
I don't want to be the dead hush, but it just all, we just talked about almost a million dollars now in the schools, again, because of healthcare. So, I mean, it just, it all seems to be coming back to healthcare. I think we really need to, you know, we've got to stick together here, stand up, and we've got to try to address it, because that's going to be, like I said, we lost on, what, $826,000 because of healthcare. It's a big guy, a lot of aid to the schools.
Well, you know, we really want to thank, if there's no other questions from the council, we want to thank Mr. Williams and his colleagues from PFM Group for presenting to us tonight. We'll look forward to the full memorandum by the end of the week or next week. Want to thank Mr. Karen for being proactive in enlisting the grant and getting support for your, your expertise. And I would take a motion to adjourn our committee of the whole, and we'll completely keep you updated as this budget committee unfolds, and we'll keep the whole council apprised of, as we want to be very proactive in this cycle because of the looming and daunting budget that's ahead of us, who work collaboratively with the mayor and the department heads as a council to make sure that we have good leadership and we do the right thing come the budget process. So we have an early start to this, and we know that this is going to be difficult over the next several months. So thank you all again. Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Trahan, seconded by Counsel Calucci. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Lapierre. We're going to have a five-minute recess, and we're going to stop back up at exactly 8:25.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudis?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Seer?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozzi?
Present.
Present. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Trahan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, a special prayer for Dorothy Mulcahy.
Mr. President, prayers for family of Buster Werner.
Mr. President, prayers for the family of Claire Donegan.
Mr. President, prayers for the family of Maji Bishop and Jerry Nichols.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with limited injunctions for all.
Set the minutes of the last meeting.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications.
We have four communications from the mayor, appointing people to the Economic Development Industry Board, EDIC. Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing Theodore Smith to the Economic Development Industry Board effective immediately. His term will expire June 30th, 2020. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing Magnolia Contreras to the EDIC Board. Her term will expire June 30th, 2018. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing Tyrone Brown to the EDIC Board effective immediately. His term will expire June 30th, 2018. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. And dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing Charles Gata to the EDIC Board effective immediately. His term will expire June 30th, 2020. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
This is a motion of counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Any public hearings?
We have one continued from March 28, 2017, meeting, petition of Alexander and Wilder Rodriguez to open a bakery with seating at 70 Commercial Street.
Counsel Capano?
Yeah, the petitioner's going to withdraw the petition. I don't know if they did that today, but they're going to withdraw.
So is that a motion to deny, or?
Motion to accept withdrawal.
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Okay, motion to accept, seconded.
Without prejudice?
Roll call.
Yes. Is it without prejudice?
Pardon?
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice? Yes, motion made without prejudice.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci? Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
All the public hearings, public hearings to be set down?
We have the petition of Rachel Bennett for Lightning Coffee Roasters located at 271 Western Ave, Suite 106, to allow retail coffee, sale of coffee beans and drinks. Then we have the petition of Comcast for the purpose of installing new underground conduit located on Circle Ave and Carolyn Road to provide Comcast services to the businesses located at 11 Circle Ave.
Which other counsel? Motion to set down the 271 Western Ave, second. Motion made for 271 East Western Ave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any motion on the Comcast? Motion to deny on the Comcast?
Just do it, do it.
Motion, motion made to put, set it down for a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports. Utilities Committee. Counsel Capano?
Unanimous vote of the committee to approve the petition with stipulations.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
License Committee. Counsel Walsh.
Unanimous vote of committee motions.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ways and Means, Counsel Net?
Mr. President, unanimous vote of the committee to accept. I make motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call. I don't know. Yes.
Transfer the sum of $50,000 from the account of reserve to the account of legal expense to fund the case of Angel Echeverria versus the City of Lynn. Transfer the sum of $547,000, 029, from the account of reserve to fund the department's retro pay raises through FY17. Establish an account for the purposes of identifying and tracking the city's increase in revenue generated from membership rates increases of Gannon Golf Course. This account revolving fund will have restrictions, and spending is only for the purpose to address improvements to the course. Certify as an available fund the amount of $50,000 is allotted to the City of Lynn Police Department by the Northshore Medical Center for the FY17, Northshore Medical Center Factor IX Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $22,460 is allotted to the City of Lynn Fire Department for the Massachusetts Emergency Management Grant, for the FY16 Emergency Management Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $333,293 is allotted to the City of Lynn School Department, LVTI, by the Executive Office of Education to fund the FY17 Skills Capital Equipment Grant Program.
Motion has been made to accept, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Is there emergency on that?
There was emergency on that.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, even though we were all there, committee of the whole, Counsel Lapierre?
Motion to accept the budget committee report.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
New business.
New business. We have a discussion with representatives from National Grid, Verizon and Comcast regarding double polls in the City of Lynn.
Gentlemen, anybody want to come up and get ready to get beaten, or? Please state your name and who you represent, please.
My name is Stan Usevich, from Verizon with offices at 63 High Street in Davis.
Dan Cameron, with National Grid with offices at 170 Metford Street in Malden.
Dave Flawelling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woben, Mass.
Thank you. I think you gentlemen all know that there's a concern amongst the counselors with all the double polls in the city. There's also some other issues with the polls about power, and I'll start with Counsel Capano on this.
Yeah, I was, so, you know, there's just more and more double polls everywhere, you know, I ride, you know, around, around the city, you know, on my street, neighboring streets, and there's, there's no notice, there's no reason, that I know of, you know, and there's, there's no communication about how long the polls are going to be there, and it just seems like there's, there's more and more of them, and I don't know the plan of, you know, when they're going to remove, you know, the, the old poll's going to be removed and a new one placed there, you know. So I, I was wondering if you could at least give a summary of what the plan is, because we just can't have, you know, more and more, you know, double polls all over the city, especially when we got polls that were waiting to be replaced, you know. I have a double poll just put up next to a poll that I've been waiting to get put up for, you know, almost a year. You know, there's two polls right, right next to it, and there's a white poll missing, you know. So if you just give a summary there and just give us an idea of what's going on.
Sure. I, I can give you an overarching view of how double polls are created. First, there are only really two reasons for double polls to, to take place, and the first is maintenance issues where the poll has aged out and needs to be replaced. The second is typically an electrical upgrade where the services in that area have to be, you know, upgraded, so the polls have to be replaced, and in some cases, in most cases, they're, they're larger, and Dan will speak to that. But double polls overall are a shared responsibility for everybody that's attached to them. For instance, the electric has to move off of that, the transfer, they have to make the transfer first. Secondarily, the next move would be streetlights, and that involves the city. Third would be fire alarm, again, that would involve the city. And then we get into the communications area, where it may be AT&amp;T, Comcast, and then finally Verizon. Verizon's last on and last off the poll, where the power company is the first on, first off the poll. Everybody else in the middle has to move in sequence, so there's safety issues that have to take place. You know, we, we've tried desperately to keep our numbers reasonable, and currently we have 22 polls that, you know, we have in our ball and court out of the, I think, Dan, what do we talk about, 247? Oh, I'm sorry, 347. So out of that, 22 are in Verizon's ball and court. For example, 63 are in streetlights ball and court, so. And I don't know if there's a miscommunication on the city side in terms of who gets that notification, but if there is, let me know, and I'll make sure that they have the contacts that they need to make sure that they're, you know, being noticed in a proper fashion. But let me tell you, we're all on the same page when it comes to double polls. No one likes them, and, and we don't either.
So just on a follow-up, I mean, I remember when you were the mayor, you were a good mayor in Salem.
Thank you.
And you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't want to ride down the street and see more and more of them. So if we, if there was a poll, double poll, a poll installed tomorrow, you know, so there's a double poll on the street, when could we, and I realize there's coordination that needs to happen, but, you know, you need to know when, you know, that poll could be expect, we could expect that poll to be removed, you know. Is it going to be a month from now, a year from now, you know?
You know, again, it all depends on, you know, those that are in place of moving their equipment, you know, are notified and then move it. By the time it gets to us, it's been there for a while, and we understand that. And logically, if everybody had 30 days to, to move their, and transfer their equipment, that's still a long time for a poll to exist. But we'll gladly work with this council or any body within the city to kind of prioritize areas or age of polls that, you know, you might, might, might want to see removed. Gladly work in tandem with, with the city on a priority basis.
Do we have a list of polls that have been up the longest, and we could start with those and work?
Well, just to make it clear too, I mean, if you went by a priority list of age, you'd be moving around the city. So what we typically like to do is take the main roads, you know, clear those out, and then work in the side streets off of them. But if there's an area that has an abundance of aging polls, that's but if there's an area that has an abundance of aging poles, that's, that's a good focus area as well.
So if we gave you, uh, a list of particular areas, you could focus on those areas and begin to remove, you know, the, the pole?
Right.
And, okay, so?
But, but it would involve every attachee on that pole?
It would involve?
Every, everybody that's attached to that pole.
So, is, is that a problem? I mean?
No.
Coordination, uh, who coordinates that?
It's coordinated through a database that the utilities pay for. We don't own it, uh, but everybody has, uh, a notification that, you know, a double pole is in place and that their, uh, their, that entity, whether it be the, uh, street light department or the fire department, is notified that you have a double pole at this location, you need to transfer off of that in order for the next in line to be noticed, to be notified.
So, so if we give you a list, you would begin, I just want to make sure we do everything we're supposed to do?
Okay.
To begin the process of removing the pole?
If I could, and I make this as suggestions for the chair, uh, that, um, I'll generate a list, um, get it to the, 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 uh, council president and he can disseminate it to the, the, the body. It will include the, uh, street, the street that that double pole is on, uh, the pole number, it doesn't have the address number, so everything is going to be driven by, uh, essentially the, the numbers on the pole and it will tell you how long that pole has been in place and who needs to transfer off that, that pole. And, you know, then in turn, the next party is notified. But bear in mind that the top of the tree is the electric company and the bottom is Verizon, so once it gets into our ball and court, that double pole can be eliminated.
Okay, but the coordination between Verizon and, uh, the, the rest of the utilities involved, that would be done by, is that something we have, anything to do with or?
No, it, it's, it's a notification system, uh, through a database called Nengens. I know that your fire department is on it and I'm assuming that your streetlight is as well, I don't know, Dan, if you have anything to add.
Councilor Lozey. I'm going to yield to the next councilor. Councilor Tahan?
Thank you. I just had a question for Stan. Um, now, why can't Verizon, like, you have a list of all the poles, what'd you say, three hundred and forty-seven?
Double poles, correct.
Yeah, like, so why can't you authorize your crew to go out and, and move all your, all the Verizon stuff onto that new pole?
Uh, bec-?
How come you can't, like?
Because there's a safety issue involved here? Power has to come off first and there's a protocol, a clear, uh, protocol that has to be followed. Now, if we went out and moved all of our stuff, that still means there's other things on that pole, so that pole cannot be removed until other entities do this. That's why we follow a very strict protocol from the top to the bottom.
Why can't you come in and the next day Comcast come in and then National, they?
No.
Stan, why?
It is?
I mean, the, I mean, the system you just described, uh, Councilor Capano, just sounds like it's never going to happen.
I know.
You know what I mean? We're never going to get him, we're never, we're not going to come one day and then they're not going to come for two months and it just sounds like we're getting, like, a big circle going on here.
Well, it's not a, a singular crew assigned to Lynn from any of these entities, you know, and, and there, you know, we're doing other, uh, things as well and that's why we pay attention to what's in our queue so that we can address it as best we can. But, you know, it's not like you can say, okay, Dan's going to come in on Monday, um, you know, the fire department's going to show up on, um, on Tuesday and then, you know, Wednesday Comcast comes in and then by Friday, this all gets cleared up. The coordination is vast, that's why the database is absolutely essential for the coordination of the removal of these, these, uh, facilities and the poles. So we work off of the same database.
Again, it just does, this doesn't make sense. Seems like Lynn's got to be a pretty good business for you guys, I mean, I mean, we got to be your biggest account, Verizon, Comcast, and we got to, I mean, it just seems like we'd be getting better service, it just seems like you guys got to change this system because it's not working, the poles just keep doubling, they're everywhere, now that we've got them on streetlights, we got streetlights not working, it just seems like it's a mess, there's got to be a better way to, um, do this, I mean, you guys got to have a better system.
Well, uh, you know, we, we did change the database system, uh, last year, we took a, a survey of the entire city so that there's a recognition of, you know, exactly where those double poles are, um, and what gets messed up in, in a lot of this is if you start to get out of step, if you take something out of turn instead of sticking with the protocol. It might be time consuming, but let me tell you, it's vastly superior to, you know, giving someone a phone call and saying, you know, we're off the pole, good luck, you know, this way here, it's documented, we know who's next and, you know, they know their responsibilities as well.
So now, when was the last time you guys changed a double pole in Lynn? You guys got record of that?
Uh, yeah.
This database that you're talking about?
Um, I, I, you know, I suppose I could go back, I know that, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were at thirty-nine, we're at twenty-two now, so, I mean, it's like constantly, you know, something that we pay attention to.
So that's you, that's, that's just Verizon moved your stuff, you're saying thirty-nine to twenty-two, the pole didn't get taken down?
Yeah, it did.
Okay, pole got taken down?
Yeah.
So you're the last one off the pole?
Correct. So when we come off the pole, we take the wood.
Okay, so when you, okay, so that's another of my questions, so Verizon, you guys take the pole, the old pole?
That's correct.
You guys pull it out of the ground, whatever, throw it in the hole.
Yeah, unless it's solely owned by Grid and there's a handful of those at best.
Right.
Yeah.
You guys just seem to be getting, like, behind, behind, you know, you, you, like, losing the war on Lynn, you can't, isn't there something you can do, have a crew and just, like, try to catch up a little?
Well, that's what we typically try?
I know you got a lot of cities and towns, but we're?
That's typically what we like to try to do is, uh, wait until there's, like, forty or fifty in our queue and then clean those out, um, but I, but I will tell you that, um, the focus on, you know, the, the creation of double poles is a double-edged sword. First and foremost, the electrical upgrades are directly tied to economic development. If you guys aren't growing, you're not looking for additional services and, and thankfully you are. Unfortunately, because of those upgrades, double poles are created and, again, we try to pay attention to them and I know, uh, uh, Grid does as well.
Now, let me ask you another question, why, why can't you guys hire more, more employees if you're that busy? You're growing that big, why can't you expand your, uh, employee base?
Probably for the same reason that if a, uh, class size is at thirty-five students and parents come to you and say, you know, why can't the class size be at fifteen?
Mr. President? You gotta be making plenty of money, aren't you? I mean, I see the bills are coming every month, I mean, you gotta be making enough to, I mean, aren't you guys set up so that you're bringing and generating enough revenue to, to supply all these services? I guess is my question? Are you doing that? Are you losing the war, you winning the war, and what do you?
I think we're, you know, uh, I think it's a, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing battle. Double poles are always going to be?
But it's an ongoing battle with us, with all our constituents screaming at us. So we're here to scream at you, I, I mean, you know, you're from politics and you know this.
Right.
But, uh, you know, you see the problem, you hear us, that's why we got you here.
Right.
We're not happy.
I under- I understand that.
And our constituents aren't happy and, and more than our constituents, they're your customers.
Mm-hmm.
So I think you guys should be, you know, stepping it up because you got competition and, you know, I don't know, I mean, you guys got to work together better, that's all I can tell you, I don't know.
Yes, thank you, we'll take that back, okay.
Councilor Walsh?
Thank, thank you.
Jeffrey, Jeff!
Jeffrey, zip it!
Councilor Walsh?
All right, thank you, I, I, I wanted, I wanted to just make a?
Jeff!
Zip it!
Time to lock you out, Jeffrey.
Council Walsh?
Thank you, I want, I just wanted to?
Sorry.
I got a, I got a quick question, so we talked about whose pole it is, like, so I, I've been through, I'm going to give you a quick story and I got to tell you how displeased I am with, with the situations here, it ain't just the double poles, it's the poles that are, that have a leaning, they're rotted out, it's pretty obvious, no one's addressing them. I had a pole in my own personal yard, three years, broken off, leaned over, hitting my garage, called everybody, called all you people, the whole thing, concerned it was going to fall on my seven-year-old daughter, the answer was, well, we'll get to it when we get to it. The pole down the street that that pole was holding up, which is near where Billy is and Billy attests to this, okay, was also a pole that fell over, rotted off, had a set of transformers on it. Approached the people there and said, listen, guys, there's been an issue gone going down here, before you touch this pole, I want you to look at this issue. No problem, we'll take care of it. Guess what we got? A double pole and the one that had been leaning on my garage for three years was still leaning on my garage, okay? That's the type of stuff that we're dealing with here, all right? When I asked whose pole it was initially, I got one of these. It's theirs, no, it's theirs, I had to meet three different people down there. I mean, that, that's ridiculous, I, I get this whole system and all this stuff, the bottom line is, in a timely fashion, we need these poles replaced. And it's unacceptable the way it's sitting right now. I, I mean, I, I've heard it from all my councilors and my, my fellow, uh, the constituents that I have here, it's ridiculous, it's not acceptable, I'm not going to beat around the bush and say that it's acceptable, it's not. So we, we want a commitment for you guys to step this up, that's what I would like to see.
Give a response?
Yes, um, as, as you guys know, I'm from National Grid and, um, it's, there's no doubt if you look at the list, we are the culprit, okay? Um, you know, we're upwards of two hundred of these poles are in our court, all right? I can guarantee you that we are adding more resources, spending more time in all of our communities, we know it's a problem. Um, it tends to be more of an issue in areas where the telephone companies of Verizon sets the poles, uh, we know that because normally if we set the pole ourselves, we transfer it first, but as Stan said, we share the custody in every community, Lynn happens to be a community where Verizon is the, uh, custodian. So the numbers, um, after you go beyond us, uh, uh, get reduced substantially, you know, Verizon only has twenty-two, there are sixty-three within the city where we need streetlights because once we transfer, then the streetlight needs to be transferred after that and then fire alarm. Uh, but I, you know, we'll work with you, um, if you want to identify, we'll, as Stan said, we'll give you a list of these poles, but certainly we have the most work to do. And if you want to prioritize poles that, um, because, you know, we can only, we, we got to start somewhere, all right? But we'd be glad to start in areas where we'd like us to prioritize. And once we transfer off, then we're going to be asking, you know, the city to do their part between the fire alarm and streetlight because you guys are next and then it'll funnel all the way down and like Stan says, once the numbers get up high enough for him, forty or fifty, we've seen it happen, they come in and, and remove them, so.
Next will be, uh, Council Lozey, then Chakoudas, then Kaluchi, then Peter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, uh, utility reps for showing up. Um, Stan, you mentioned, uh, notifying the, the proper city agency, um, when it comes to the city's turn to remove their lights, I'm, I'm assuming the city's streetlights is what you're referring to. Um, is, one request I'd have is that you notify the city council of anything and I think what we're looking for is whatever information you can give us, you say you have a database, the fire department might have it, but we'd like to have it, we'd like to get our hands on it because we're very good at, as you know, pushing whoever we have to push to get it done. Because, you know, we are, we're, we're frankly, we're really fed up here, that double poles for years, the numbers are growing in the city and we're not really seeing progress. Um, and so, please give us that information and I don't know why the address can't be put in with the poll numbers, I'm, maybe you can answer that, I'm a little bit?
Yes, sure, because the, the polls are specific, you know, entities to themselves. There might be, you know, um, a split address, it might be on a corner, so the database is made up as, uh, as it always has been, on telephone and electric, uh, numbers, you know, on, on routes. Uh, in terms of the database, uh, the database, I, I'll, I'll give you the contact for that and, uh, you know, wha- all it does is tell you that, you know, you, the City of Lynn, and if you all want to be on it, that's, uh, that will just, you know, it's up to you, but, uh, then you'll get noticed, I would assume, on streetlights when they need to be moved. But that's a contact that you guys can make individually, it's not something I can do for you.
Crack the whip, we, we want to know, we want to expedite the process of removing that double pole.
I, I guess my point is, counselor, is that the people that are notified are ordinarily operational people, people that, you know, can, like, i- in our case, our field foreman get notified, so here, I would assume that it's someone in fire alarm that's responsible, you know, in, in the fire alarm or electrical department to move those wires. Now, if you want to go on and ask for the, the, um, access to the streetlights, then they'll give you access to those streetlights.
Well, can't we ask you folks, don't you represent that database?
No.
Who, who does that, who's in charge of the database?
I'll give you the contact, I'll give the president the contact of the database and you can, you know, uh, work out issues that you want to see from them, uh, with the people that run the database.
We, yeah, we, I think, I, at least I would like to know who's lagging, who's not doing their job? And if it's the city, I think we can, we can get our ISD to come here and say, hey, you, you're overdue by six, nine months, you know, what, what can we do to help you to get it done? And if it's not the city and it's Verizon, National Grid or Comcast, we want you on the carpet to tell us why you've taken nine months to get your share of the work done.
I, I, I will tell you that for you, for this body to get involved with being notified for streetlights is really getting into the weeds and I, I would suggest that the information that I will provide to the president will include how many, um, each entity has and a full list of where those double poles are and from a policy perspective, having sat in, you know, those seats that you occupy, uh, I will tell you, that's the most valuable tool that you'll, you'll have is because you'll get to see everything, all right? Rather than to get periodic notices of this pole has moved into your ball and court. I don't think that this body necessarily wants to see that, but you want to see the overarching picture in the City of Lynn, who, how many poles, who's got them, who's responsible and who's next, if that's what I'm hearing from you, is that correct?
That and, and if there is a, um, chronological time associated with, uh, the status of each company? Yeah, that's, that works for us, I mean, again, if we're going to look at this data and some particular entity has taken six, nine months to do their job, I think, I, I can speak on behalf of all my colleagues here, we're going to be pretty upset at that entity and they better do their job and that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
We want the tool that will enable us to crack the whip to get it done, so thank you.
I'll, I'll forward that to, uh, the council president.
Council Chakoudas?
I have a question, it's similar to Wayne's, you just said you replaced a few poles, double poles already, you replaced them? Did you say you've already started replacing some poles, taking the double poles down?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just ask, how long was that process? What was the timeline on that?
I, I can't give you because each pole has an individual, uh, start and end date, so?
On an average, let's say you're going to start some poles?
I couldn't possibly give you an average.
Would it be weeks, a month? Can you answer that at least?
It could be longer than that.
Council Kaluchi?
I guess, Stan, you referred to, uh, a lot of these double poles and where there's economical development coming, in Franklin Alley Street?
Yep.
It's been the same way, there's double pole there, no, nothing's changed. In, uh, Jack O'Donnell, nineteen ninety-two, we're talking about double poles back then, we landed on the moon in nineteen sixty-nine. Can't we just get rid of the double poles?
I, I will tell you, counselor, that even in sixty-nine, we're talking about double poles.
Yeah, can we, can we get rid of them? Can we just take care of it, please?
All of them forever?
No, the one, from now on, from now on, just, you know, no, forever, yes. It's, it's sickening.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to my world, guys. Council Capano?
I just got one last, um, thing I'd like to say. The, the thing that bothers me is this database, the way that sounds, it's not like call Joe Smith or call this company, it's like call the database, it just doesn't give me a good It just doesn't give me a good feeling. Is that a database? Is that one of the utility companies, one of you guys? Or like, is that a private company?
It's a private company that every utility pays to be part of. The municipalities are free, so there's no charge for your notification or your participation. But it is the most accurate way and most productive way to make sure that everybody stays in line, so that you know what's taking place. You know, think of it as a massive spreadsheet for the entire commonwealth of Massachusetts. You know, and the data is only as good as those participants that move, you know, that use the database once they make their transfer.
So, we contact the database with specific information, and they coordinate with all of you?
Yes.
And that's how that works?
That's how that works. That's correct.
And if there's a problem, we call them, you know?
No.
If we don't see any action, you know?
Right. And that's why, I think, counselor, getting this sheet with every pole that is a double pole in the city, you will see who's balling court has that particular pole, who's up. And then, I would urge you, if you had questions on that, give me a call, and I'll walk through it with you.
Okay.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
The database, do they do follow-up? Like, I know that you've said there's four or five different companies or entities that are involved in everything from moving the wires to the, taking the pole out of the ground, putting the new pole in. But does the database actually do follow-up if Verizon calls and says, "Okay, we're all done," and then National Grid comes in?
Yep.
But you know what I'm saying? If they don't call within a certain period of time, are they calling you, saying, "How come you haven't got it done?"
No. They're, once National Grid moves off, the next party, whether it be fire alarm, or a streetlight, or Verizon, will get notified immediately once the database is changed, reflecting that they've moved.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, you notified me that I got to move my wire and put a new wire on the new pole. If I don't get back to you within a week or a month, does the database just sit on that information?
No, the company that gets notified sits on that. It's not the database.
But what I'm saying is, there's nobody overseeing that the company's doing what they're supposed to do. Yet you guys are paying a database for a service that I don't think you're getting the service that you...
The database is not responsible for moving or transferring wires. They're responsible for keeping a clear category of who's responsible. And as I said earlier in this, when I started, this is a shared responsibility. And that's what makes it so difficult.
Counsel Tron.
Thank you. Stan, now, do you, maybe it's a crazy question, but...
Thank you, Stan.
Do you have somebody that works for you full-time, that looks at that database every day and posts stuff that you need to do next on poles?
Our construction crews get this in each region. You know, like, the garages are broken down by regions. They'll examine those. For instance, Kathy Reed, who was from Lynn, she had responsible, responsibility in this region. And she would plan out the removal of double poles in her region. And that's what our people do. So, once they get notified...
She looks at the database every day?
You know, maybe not every day, but it's part of their responsibility to make sure that those poles are recognized and planned for.
Okay. Now, does everybody else have someone that looks at the database every day that they pay? Any other?
Yes, we do. And keep in mind that we have, you know, we serve...
Somebody full-time to read this database every day?
Correct. We're broken up by region, but...
About Comcast, does Comcast do that also?
Yes. Currently, we don't have any in our bucket to transfer. And along the lines of the database we keep talking about, the old PLM database was terrible. This new Engines database is much better. And from a Comcast perspective, where the old database, we would get notified of transfers. We would send a truck out there to go look at the transfer. And like Stan said, it goes in order. So, somebody may have input some information that might not have been correct. So, we were rolling trucks out there to go look at these locations. They weren't ready. This new database now, we roll a truck out there. If it's not ready, we can dispute it. Goes back to the person on top of us to do their, to go back out, take another look at transfer. So, it's a lot better than the old one. We've come a long way with this database. We have people in it every day.
So, maybe I don't understand. So, now, can you, if you show up, and Verizon hasn't moved their wire yet?
Well, Verizon is under us, so they would be typically last off of the pole. Verizon would be last.
So, if you show up, you can't just do the pole unless they're already on?
No, we can't touch, they can't touch our plant, we can't touch their plant.
Counsel Lozey. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to elaborate on some of your questions, and I have some other questions. And what you're asking, what you were asking, Mr. President, if I'm correct, is you were wondering how this tracking work works. And I think you've kind of answered it. It sounds like this is a newer-type tracking that is more accurate. And all they're doing is tracking. It's basically self-enforced by the utilities. When it's that utility's turn, they're obligated to go ahead and remove their elevation of wires and trigger the next one until it gets to the end at Verizon.
That's correct.
How long ago was this new tracking implemented?
About a year ago.
A year ago. And Comcast has no outstanding...
We had, when I got notification last week of the meeting, we checked the database, and we have someone monitoring it every day. They basically had, we had 15 transfers, and we cleaned them up on Friday. They're all done. So, now, we'll keep going in on a periodic basis and maintaining. As soon as they, you know, finish doing what they're doing, and it trickles down to us, we'll get in and clean up our transfers.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, sir.
I'm sorry.
Dave Llewellyn.
Dave. So, Dave, I think the city council would give, this, we'll call it a project of removing double poles, an F. And Comcast, it sounds like you'd give yourself or your company an A in the work it's doing?
Well, you've got to remember, we're just a tenant on the pole. The power and telephone, they own the poles.
They all are, except for who owns the pole. But I'm just asking you, you're saying that Comcast does their job?
I would say yes.
Okay.
But again, we can only do our job when that transfer is done on top of us. If it's fire alarm, or streetlight, or something.
But when it comes to your wire, Comcast's wire, you're saying you get it done immediately?
Yes, I would like to say we do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cameron, how about your company? How would you rate your company in keeping track of when it's their time to remove their wires? When we look at the database and see outstanding six, nine months, how does your company shake up for that?
Well, we clearly, as I said earlier, we clearly have the most transfers to do here, all right? But I'm not making excuses. I mean, we, as I said earlier, we realize this is an issue not only in Lynn, but in other communities as well. And we are committing resources to address this. But I will say, follow up on what Stan said. Our facilities are the most involved, and I, it's the most equipment on the pole. And it kind of, as Stan said, we do ride with the economy. As you know, there's a lot of load growth in Lynn. And that's prompted us to actually increase, you know, our facilities on these poles. And they require higher poles. And that's, a lot of times, we're driving Verizon to set new poles. Because they've got to be bigger, they've got to be stronger, and to accommodate the electrical infrastructure to meet all the loads. The other thing I would say is, you know, we've had some tough weather here over the last five or six years. And I think Lynn has done pretty well through a lot of these storms and a lot of those because of the infrastructure improvements. So, it's a tough one. You know, I always say it's like renovating your kitchen. Everyone likes the end product, but it's tough to go through. And we're in that right now. But to put it in perspective, there's 347 poles in Lynn that need to be removed, or double poles. I don't have the exact number, but I'm guessing the total is probably up near 8,000 or 9,000 poles in the city. So, on a percentage basis, it's certainly on the low side. But we are committed to at least get our numbers down, because we're responsible for over two-thirds of them.
Mr. Cameron, I appreciate everything you said. But it's still unacceptable to this council, whether you think it's a low percentage or not, that there are too many double poles. And if your company is responsible for these long-term double poles, like six, nine months, or even years, I'd like to hear more from you, what your company's doing to solve this problem, rather than tell us in much of your rhetoric of reasons why you're unable to do it. I mean, additional hardware that you're putting on, more wires, more customers. All those reasons, that's fine and well. We want it done, and we want you to tell us, what is Verizon doing to change the game here for all the years in the past with the problem? We want solutions. And we want to know if Verizon's late in getting those double poles removed or moving their hardware. We want to know, what are you going to do to improve that, that culture of Verizon getting their wires removed?
Well, the reasons, the reasons I gave you were just to tell you why we're here where we are, all right? But I'm guaranteeing, on behalf of National Grid, that we realize that we've got to stop our game up. And we have, and we will, in the city of Lynn. But I would be happy, as Counselor mentioned earlier, if you want us to prioritize. I can't stand here and say we'll get all 200 in the next couple of months. But we'll certainly be working inland this year. The weather's here, the weather's in our favor here. We will be doing our part to reduce these numbers substantially.
Counsel Kaluch.
Have a question.
Can we just, how, how we do this? Give us the list of the poles, and we'll get back to you in a couple of weeks, or a week or two, with the ones that we need taken down pronto, and you can do it. Is that cool?
I mean, we can certainly do our part, you know? Again, it's, you've got to realize, no, I mean, we'll, if it's a pole that National Grid hasn't transferred yet, we'll take care of that. But then, as Stan said, the next one is going to be the streetlight. Now, that's going to be fire alarm and all the way down. So, you know, I think we're all here guaranteeing that we'll do our part.
Do you have the number for the grid? The grid we're talking about, any number for those?
You mean the total number?
No, the grid, the grid number.
The phone number?
For the grid.
To call National Grid?
No, no. The database, the grid, the database.
Well, the number, out of the 347, 200.
What is it?
There's a total of 347 double...
No, he's not going to give you the phone number.
The database that you guys talked about.
It's Engines.com.
What is it called?
Engines.com. They're based out of Georgia.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you.
Engines.com.
I mean, databases or not, I get enough paperwork to choke a horse, probably, and I'm not looking for any more. But I want, I'd like to know, action-wise, what is the plan? I mean, you're talking about allocating more resources? Are we going to have manpower, more manpower coming in here? Is that what you guys are telling us here? Committing to that is what I'm asking.
For National Grid, yes. We are working weekends. That's one of the ways we're addressing this. We are a regulated company, so adding manpower is not going to be a solution. But we are, we realize that the numbers inland are high. And I'm just telling you, this year, we'll be focusing on getting this number down.
I appreciate. How about the other guys behind you? Are you guys going to allocate more resources and commit to us that you're going to do that? Or is this...
Well, I think what we'll do is make this a priority within our construction group once those numbers start to rise in our queue. So, we'll address them as we've always done.
Well, that's the problem, I think. Addressing them as we've always been is not working. And I think that's what we're trying to get through. That's why I would like a commitment from you guys for manpower, or increase the, or at least reduce the lag time. I mean, we're talking years, probably, on some of these poles. We're not talking months, we're not talking weeks. And I mean, I know sometimes it's hard to schedule. Mr. Verizon shows up and looks at the pole and says, "Jeez, you know, we've got to call Xfinity." It's another 60 days before somebody else shows up and look at the pole. I mean, it's frustrating. It really is. And I mean, we can talk about, you know, how many things we're going to do in databases. We're commitments. I mean, at least I do. I mean, I'm hoping my colleagues would support. They get a commitment here.
Counsel Lapierre.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like anything else, you know, they usually, if people do not maintain or take care of their properties, we have ordinances on the books, there's penalties, you can impose fines. I would like to get a legal opinion from Mr. Lamanna. Is there any type of penalty that we can impose as an ordinance from this council, the body to make these vendors go a little faster and expedite the process? That we can levy anything if it goes past a certain amount of time, or can we impose some fines?
I will look into that. I do not know that off the top of my head. But I promise I have an opinion to this council before the close of business tomorrow.
Like anything else, money talks. Put some pressure on these folks. They can't cooperate, they'll be fined every day. Thank you.
Counsel Cabral.
Yeah, I'd like to make the suggestion that we get that list, you know, the database, and set up a meeting with the Utilities Committee to set priorities with input from all the councilors, and get back to Utilities as soon as possible so we can begin, you know, this process.
Counsel Net.
I know that we have been asking you to do your part. And also, I would like you to tell us, what can we do to help you to expedite your work? I know it's not easy, but just let us know what we can do.
What the city can do to expedite our work?
Right, to help you to expedite your work.
I think the message is loud and clear. We need to expedite our work, and that's what National Grid will be doing.
Counsel Tron.
Thank you. You guys said earlier, I don't know if you had a number of, how many poles? How many lights were on the poles?
63.
So, the 63 lights, now, do those lights have to be moved first?
Second.
Okay, so they're second, so we're responsible for those lights, right?
That's correct.
The company that we hired to take care of our lighting, they move the poles?
Well, they...
I don't actually know who does it.
The city's responsible for...
No, I understand that, but I mean, do we do that in-house, or do we...
Yeah, we actually have a company that goes on...
Yes, a company does it.
You have a company that may paint your streetlights, yes.
We can't go move all those lights in the next couple of months, the city, and like, do that first for you guys?
It would certainly help the process. And then it would be fire alarm.
Are all those lights still on those second poles, most of them? Like, are they still functioning, those lights that are on those double poles still?
Oh, sure. Yes. They are left connected, yes.
So, I mean, that's something, so we can't expedite that and get that done for you, that thing? Because that can't be done first?
No, that can't, the 63, so the 63 right now, that, nothing can be done until that streetlight is transferred to the new pole.
Okay, so we can do something about that?
Exactly.
So, we can move those 63 poles?
That's right.
So, why don't we move those poles? That'll be our job. Then you guys go after those poles next. Is that...
Yeah, and then there's 24. Yes, that is a grid. But it's 20 out of 2, there's 24 that are the responsibility of the fire department.
Okay, so we'll get the fire department, too, to do it.
And that'll move the process.
The same light company probably moves all the electric part of the city, ISD, so... Okay, so we'll all call them tomorrow, and we'll have them moved. And then we'll call you guys and let you know that we did that? And then you guys...
Well, no, it'll...
Okay, so you guys just go into the database?
Exactly. They'll give...
Remind you to look into the database. Someone can call you, whatever.
If Comcast is the next attachee to the pole, they will be notified.
Does that light company belong to the Engines? Oh, well, that's good. That's good. So, we'll automatically get the notification.
Okay, so you got to get it. Once we move those things, they go in, our city goes into the database also, all the cities and towns. Okay.
Counsel Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to see the representatives back here. If you could, maybe in either two weeks or in a month's time, would you individuals, folks, be agreeable to coming back here to report on the progress?
Yeah, I think if, Counsel, quite frankly, you know, I think if we went two or three months, came back in June, you know, sometime first part of June...
Two months?
Yeah, well, you know why? Well, that'll give us time to move the lights, and there's no...
Okay, two months' time?
Just, if I may, through you, Mr. President, the streetlight department here is not participating in that database. It's listed as a non-participant. So, if you can give me the name of the person that handles streetlights, whether it's the fire department or electrical in town, I'll send them...
ISD. The Inspection Services Department.
But it'd be easier if either you or Terry got in touch with each other tomorrow.
Correct.
And that information can be passed.
All right, thank you. Very good.
Yeah, because that company that we hire needs to be on that database.
So, the second Tuesday of June, we'll have you guys back.
Second Tuesday, these gentlemen will come back. I'm sorry for the beating you guys took tonight. If I can just say something real quick, it's more of a request. And I see it all the time throughout the city. It's more towards Comcast than Verizon. When you guys are out there, and you girls, when they're cutting wires off of houses, tired of seeing the wires laying in the street. If they could make sure they cut the wire right to the pole, because one of these days, some little kid... some little kid, a car's going to snap that wire, and someone could get hurt.
It's our practice, and I know that is Comcast as well, to, when a customer changes, to take that wire with us. But in the event that that does not happen, and you're, or any of the councils are made aware of it, give me a call, we will dispatch out on that.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing, real quick, just on that note, one thousand Weston Ave, across the street from the GE Credit Union, there is more wires than I've ever seen laying on the ground over there.